Planning Commission meeting for the night of July...
June.
June 27, 2018. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Geeson-Fields. Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Wadi.
Here.
Chair Kent.
Here. Are there any ex parte communication disclosures?
None for me.
That we have any issues really, so, thank you. Moving on, consent calendar, sorry, yeah, consent calendar. Consent calendar items considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a commission, commissioner member or a member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Today we have one item on the consent calendar, which is the minutes from last mission, last commission meeting. Any comments on them?
Minutes?
Yes. I want to comment on the minutes. Yeah, I, we've gotten in a pro, on page two, or page three. The minutes are saying the public comments were open, public comments closed. I think that should say public hearing opened, public hearing closed. And I say that for, because I think that if we were an advisory commission, we would be doing comments, I believe, but we are a government code commission and we need to have formal public hearings, I think, and that the record we're creating here is a formal record. And I think it's, I mean, and I, so I think that the protocol universally always should be that we are opening a public hearing and closing a public hearing, even when there are no comments, anything else, so that's.
Are you suggesting, suggesting the agenda should be changed also to say public hearing?
Yeah, and at least certainly in the future, and I think, and I think when, when you as chair open it, I think you should call it a public hearing. And that's what I've done when I was a chair, and it just realized, and I was thinking about it, that, that we are different from other, we do have responsibilities to hold public hearings, and I think, I think that we should reflect that.
But just one thing to clarify, because I, I think you're right, and it's a good catch, but I don't think that changes the general public comment section on the agenda, because that's different from a public hearing on an action item.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I totally agree. Yes, yeah.
So.
I saw you crossing it out on your agenda.
We have, we could call for public comment, the comments, the public comments, and then we, we have heard them, and so now we're calling it a hearing?
No, that, public comments for things that are not on the agenda, so it's an open forum for the public to address the commission on planning issues in Albany. But when we have an item that's been agendized, and we, we're, we have to, we make a decision, have to make a decision on that agenda, on that item, then it's a public hearing, I believe.
Okay, I understand for now. All right, well, then that's.
So, and I just saw that in the minutes, when I was reading it, and I just thought, well, I better bring it up. I think I've seen it other minutes before in the, in the past few months, and.
We can, we can make those changes.
Other than, other than that, I have no changes or modifications to the substance of the minutes, so just wanted to make that comment.
Does anyone want to?
And move approval of the minutes for the, move approval of the consent calendar, I guess.
With those changes?
Sure.
Second?
I'll second that, I just have a, if you could just clarify for me, so, we're still going to call it the public comment period, but in general be referred to as a public hearing?
No, no.
It's two different things, so the.
This remains, but if it's an item discussion, and they're within the.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
This will be called a public comment, but if it's an action item, and we, within that action item, we have public hearing.
Okay.
Different than the early.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Okay, that's right.
Makes total sense.
Okay.
All right, so, all in favor, so, do we have, do we have a second on that?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the public comment. For persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the commission ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Do we have any speakers?
Not for public comment.
Okay, public comment is closed. Moving on to our action item, seven dash one, study session for planning application 18043, design review and parking exception for first floor and second story addition at 1110 Ordway Street. Could you do a report?
Yes. Once again, this is planning application 18043, design review and parking exception for first sec, first and second story addition at 1110 Ordway Street. Some background on the property, the subject property is a 3,500 square foot lot with a two-bedroom, one-bathroom, 1,166 square foot house built in 1941. City records show the following work done to the property, termite and dry rot repair and electrical reservice to 100 amps. Here's a street view of the property as it looks today. Project request, the applicant is seeking design review approval for first story and second story addition. They are also requesting a parking exception, which is required to locate one of the off-street parking spaces in the front yard setback area. The project scope will result in a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, 1,905 square foot home with a maximum height of 26 feet 7 inches. Here's an existing elevation of the home, and here's the proposed west elevation, and here's the proposed north elevation, a side elevation of the home, and the other side, the south elevation, and then lastly, the rear. Exceptional design projects which exceeded .45 FAR are subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant is proposing a 54.54 FAR with the proposed additions for the home. Exceptional design and treatments include matching exterior siding materials, matching clay tile roof, and landscaping improvements. And here's a snapshot of the landscape plan that was submitted by the applicant. Some possible project refinement, some possible refinement could come in the form of simplifying the window language by reducing the window count, particularly on the south side of the elevation. Consider defining the entry to the home more so through either landscaping, hardscaping, or other architectural features. The entrance to the home is located on the north side of the property and is distinguished only by a porch cover. Consider exterior lighting particularly by the front entry of the home to provide clear visibility at night. Majority of the roof forms, existing roof forms are gable roofs with an exception to the rear facade. One option is to consider implementing more gable roof forms more substantially with the proposed second story addition. The proposed east elevation reads as very flat. One option is to consider recessing or projecting portions of that facade to create more architectural character and interest. And the windows on the proposed north elevation at the rear look unproportionate to the overall wall plane. Consider resizing and/or adding additional windows. In regards to the parking exception, there is currently one off-street parking space provided in the existing attached garage. One additional off-street parking space is triggered with the proposed additions to the home. The applicant is seeking a parking exception to allow one off-street parking space in the front yard setback area on the driveway. This would result in a total of two off-street parking spaces for the property. No correspondences have been received by staff. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission rev, oh okay, review the proposed plans and provide feedback to the applicant staff.
Yeah, we actually don't have the findings and conditions that, this is intended as a study session for you to provide feedback to the applicant.
That's it.
Any questions of staff?
Okay, I do. Isn't this the front of the house, and isn't this the east elevation? And, and aren't the east, south, north, and west elevations all mislabeled in the plans? I have trouble with that.
That may be so. I've taken this from the plan, so if that is.
This, you took it from the plans, and it's mislabeled, and I think it's mislabeled consistently. The rear of the house should be the west elevation, right? And, and the entrance is on the north side, not the south side, as it says on the plans. And therefore, I think your recommendation for, you were discussing, I was trying to trouble figuring out from the staff report where the windows were you were talking about, because it says proposed south elevation, but I believe that the, the.
So I think.
Window count is high, especially high on this, on the north elevation, and I, so I want to, and so I think, I think every, I think we, everything's inverted in this, in both the plans, and then you've probably picked it up and you did the staff report, anyway. So that leads me to, leads to confusion. So this would be the south elevation, and this is not the elevation you were referring to when you talked about the high window count.
Correct, so then it's inverse.
Yeah.
This is the one with the high window.
High window count, which is actually the north elevation.
So are we saying their north arrow is backwards, basically, on their plans?
Oh, I haven't looked. Didn't look at the arrow.
Because based on the.
I was looking at the elevations, and so on the main plans.
Based on their north arrow and what they labeled the elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
North, no, nope.
That's correct.
Oh, wait a minute.
Don't they have them labeled correctly?
No. Yeah, the entrance to the house is on the north side, yeah, the arrow's wrong.
Wait.
Yeah, because the.
The arrow's wrong.
Entrance is on this side.
Longest arrow.
Which is north.
Yep, that's right, that's right.
Well, could I maybe suggest, because I also was confused and.
The arrow's correct.
No, I don't think so.
That way's north, I mean, that's the north side.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, on that, it is correct, but then on.
And show the same.
But then it's turned around on these plans, see? So that now the landing is showing down here, so it, you're right, that little, whatever the diagram you were pointing to.
Their little site.
Was correct, but I don't think that carries through.
Well, I guess maybe, I think, this is, this is confusing, but maybe for purposes of discussion tonight, we could just refer to the way they are labeled.
I completely agree.
Okay, because I think otherwise it's going to get even more confusing.
This is a study session.
This is all messed up.
Yeah.
And I think the, the north arrow in question is the one on the actual site plan, which, based on our cursory look at it, does, it does appear to be in error.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So for the purpose of this discussion tonight, and given that there's this directional issue, perhaps we can just go elevation by elevation and provide feedback to the applicant?
I think we can do that, yeah, and that, yeah. Anyway.
Are we still on questions?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I did have one quick question for staff. Is this existing building a McGregor? I believe so, yeah. And how does that sort of, is there any CEQA review as it relates to historic preservation that gets incorporated as part of this review? No, we don't do historic review on, on McGregor's. Okay.
And is the house currently vacant? So it looked from the photos that were submitted like it's perhaps been vacant for some time.
Yeah, from, from what I understand, there had been an occupant there for many years. Our police department had a call for service right around the end of 2016, I think, in the form of a welfare check, and the occupant was taken to a hospital, I'm not sure that he's living anymore, but at that time, the police identified that there was no electricity, running water, or gas service to the house.
Oh, wow.
So it's, it's in pretty rough shape.
Okay.
Didn't we review a house right next to it, that one on the north side, about a year ago? Am I mixing?
I don't know.
We've looked at 1106, which is, was Commissioner Manotti's house, so it's one over.
Two, two more, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then the residence across the street also went through a second story addition.
1108 is next door, I don't, it didn't look like it had worked on recently, yeah.
Oh, you're right, now I see where we are now, got it.
1108.
And could you, sorry, when you went through that parking exception, I was a little confused what was, what was being requested, and they wanted two off-street.
So they have one in the garage, and then it's an exception to have that second in the front yard setback, so they have the dimensions, it's just a matter of making the findings to lawfully allow the second space to be located there.
Oh, okay, second space is the only one they want exception in the front, okay.
And they're not removing any existing parking, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Did the architect come up and, would you like to come up, and yeah, please come up to the podium and speak to the plans a bit?
First, I can answer a few questions, if you want, or I can try to talk about those elevations a little bit, whichever way you want.
Why don't you talk a little bit about what sort of your overall vision is, that's what I'm more interested in, and, and, you know, kind of what your program is, or what your objectives are here.
So, like the panel said, or somebody said, the house is, you know, very bad right now, so we're intending to like fix it and make it, you know, something a little better, and also trying to make it a little bit bigger, you know, the, the population here now is growing, and people want a bit more square footage. So knowing that and trying to work with what the city is, you know, a heely, although not big hills, there's still hills and there's views, issues, the primary focus, and I'll talk about the parking afterwards, was to do the addition, but towards the back of the house, so from the street, and of course, the elevation, don't give it justice, because you never look at a building, it's standing in front of you like this, there's always a perspective aspect of it. And if we could go to, actually, the other one, yeah, on that, this one, the previous one? This one tells you more what you would actually feel from the street. The street, you're right here, you're standing maybe 20 feet over there, you're about this tall, that's your angle of view, so you're kind of like going to get a hint of what's happening behind, you're never going to feel, well, neighbors, you know, everybody has neighbors, even that house, and then, so you're never really going to feel that it's a bigger house. It is bigger, but it's not going to be a two-story house right in your face. And we're actually extremely careful to try to do that, and if you look at the site plan and the roof plan, we really tried really hard, I tried to convince the owner to spend a little bit more money to try to achieve this, because not only we're trying to put more square footage in the back, we're trying to make it quality square footage, and at the same time, those houses on an extremely narrow lot, so it's completely impractical to create a second parking, because then the whole frontage of the house would literally be a garage, or you would have a tandem parking, I mean, a tandem garage, which is really not very practical. So in order to be able to like go to the second story, we decided to go from the center of the house, where the house is already a split story, and to try to utilize this instead of creating a big stairway from the front of the house, and we really fit it in the middle, and then that's going to make you understand more why the elevation actually looked like that. If I show you on that plan, and maybe you can go on sheet A3, and I'll point on the So we have this unusual shape, like rarely seen houses, this, that thing being here with a staircase getting to it, and you might have seen this a few times in Oklahoma, a few pull-through, your second story in the back, and it looks pretty horrible. Usually you have, it follows the path up the stairs, and it really looks like you just splashed something in the middle of the house, so we didn't do that. Actually, we did it, but we didn't do it to make it look like this, we made it look like it would actually belong to the house in the first place, and by doing so, we actually enlarged it quite a bit, costs more money, takes more space, but by doing this, when you look at it, at its perspective, from the front of the, from, from the street, when you see this, it doesn't look like this little splinter of stairs, but it looks like something that actually belongs to the house. And if we go, actually, that's probably it, and if we go to the elevations, you see all those windows here? Actually, you can stop right there, those windows, I'm going to point them on the elevation, they're actually all the way up in the staircase, you never really get a glance through them. So they're actually here to make the building more, more appealing from the exterior without really giving a view from the resident or their neighbors. And then if you want to go back, I mean, down to the elevations, that would be perfect. So, a little more, so we can actually see that one too. So, that's these windows here, those high windows would give you the idea, when you look at the time, that, oh my goodness, they're going to see everything that the neighbors are, I mean, in the back, and it's actually not going to happen. It's really just to try to give somewhat more character to the whole thing. You don't want this big piece of stucco right there, that would actually look quite easy. Something with those windows here, you've got to understand that this is a split level house, this part is a crawl space at about 18 inch, the back of the house is a split level, like eight or seven or eight stairs, and then this part of the house, we're actually going back down. So when you're here, we personally do those windows, they're kind of like at the same height, I guess, because we're just in a couple inches, but really, they're extremely high. So when you're standing in the house, you're in a very tall person who cannot see through the window. It's light, it's kind of nice, it works with the overall volume of the building, but it doesn't add more, or it doesn't remove more privacy to the neighbors. These windows here, of course, they do remove some sort of privacy, and there's a balcony. Again, the balcony is more for the looks, because nobody, never uses them, and I know they don't, because I draw them a lot, and I know they just never use them, because they tell me afterwards, but it contributes to the, to the look of the building, and then also what it helps us doing is having those windows, because you're still in your life in, in that room, they're reset, so when you're at the window, you're actually, you're further away to the property line, about all the width of the, of the balcony, which is about six foot, so now you're probably about 15 feet from the property line, which is actually quite nice, considering that it's a five-foot setback. So we could have done what most people do, just, you know, take the house a bit higher, put smaller windows that look small, but give more view, or actually, you can go the other way around, costs more money, but it's nicer, and when you're driving, you can see, like if you're driving this direction, this is what you would see, something like this, and this, you can't. this is what you would see. Something like this, and this, you can't like, you would see the roof. You wouldn't really see that it's a massive thing, and then the neighbor's house would be pretty much like this in front of it. So I think it kind of, it kind of works a bit. I do a lot of work in Berkeley, Albany, El Cerrito, and it's kind of always the same story as soon as you're on the hill. And for once, I got a, actually, I got to say, I got a developer that's willing to spend money. And you can tell by the size of the house, it's not developing a lot of square footage, but it's got a ton of envelope to get there, and that actually costs money. You know, if you draw, if you build a rectangle, it's more expensive than building a square. So it's more challenging, and we have to go through the panel, do things, you know, instead of taking shortcuts and making an ugly little building that could just go, you know, without anybody noticing. So now we go from that side, we're a little bit higher. So if you don't mind going down a little bit, I mean, whichever way, that very close elevation towards me. Perfect. So this one here, these are the original windows. And like you said, they're really disgusting. But we've got to, you know, bring it again, because it actually functioned for the inside, and they don't add or remove anything from the neighbors, because they've been here for as long as the house been there. They're literally replaced. This is a very sensitive, we're at four foot six, this is a kitchen window, your head would probably be right here. Small, it's a big window, six foot person's head, it would be just like a woman's finger. Again, I could have done a small window like this, looked up a small window, but it would do nothing work. If anything, it brings more light. And these, since they have a view that actually gets your neighbor, I think it's a walk-in closet in the bathroom, which obviously, I mean, it's a little bit faster or something. So we really try to think about those views, and then in the back, we open it up as much as we could. And you can see the neighbor here is going to be about seven feet away. Those little windows here actually get no view. I mean, not unless you're really bored and, you know, looking through the window while you're in the bathroom, but nobody does that. And then we got residentially sized windows looking down this way, oversized here. You can see we have a nice standard of ceiling. And those oversized windows, which really just makes the inside fantastic without taking anything away from anyone else. And for the front, well, you can see that, that's the part that we really spent a lot of money on. We actually, if you go down a little bit, pretty short, just the other door. Also, so it was, so this is the existing house. This, that's pretty much what we have right now. Obviously, can't put a second garage, I mean, it just doesn't make sense, and we didn't even want that. That's the existing window, that's the existing window. They're cold new, but they're going to be replaced. I think we're changing the shape of this one slightly, but I actually don't remember it right now. But what we did here, so that's the access upstairs, we made it wider. We put a window, we put another two small windows here that give, that give absolutely no view, but when you're on the top of the stairs, you're going to see far away, like some loose guy, you know, you're going to glance at a house. And then what we did also, so when you look at this, we integrated this stairs, which is actually more difficult than you think when you see it finished. So we extended that roof, because we got a split level, we got a little here, we got one here, and we got another one up here. So we extended that roof, so when you look at the house, we're actually continuing its existing roofline, which the look would be finished, because everything is going to be new, like it actually was intended to be here. And then we drop this down, we bring this up, and then we bring this up kind of a step up. And this one pops out only about a couple of feet. It just helped make this big box less boxy. You got a little event happening, a little gamble. It's kind of nice, but when you look from here, there's a lot going on, a lot going on from here, which is really character with those type of houses. You know, you look at the Spanish, colonial, and Mediterranean, think that's what they would do, because they would have allowance, you know, pop dies, they get a few gold coins somewhere, they put a little door. That's really what they would do. And they end up looking at something like that. And then for the entrance, again, it's a matter of compromise. And with all this compromise, a lot would be with those little projects, because they're not expendable. You know, it's not damn near a couple of acres. So the entrance is here. Everybody would love the entrance to be here, so it looks like a cute little house. People, a lot of people don't want to buy houses with a door inside. But the truth is, with this width, with the garage and the door here, you don't really have a room there anymore. So it's a huge trade-off to put a door to make the building happy, you know, looking at the door that they never going to use, versus coming inside the house, minimizing the amount of corridor, and using about two or three hundred square feet to make a room that's useful, instead of making a corridor with a bigger door, which actually would not even fit in characters to the house. So that's kind of like the story, and, you know, where we're trying to come from and how we get there. So now I'm happy to answer questions.
I have one question immediately, and I might have others later. Okay, on that front elevation, take a look at the upper, those upper windows there? I see, is this a different surface treatment, or will that be also stucco there? You see how it's not shaded in, it's white there? I'm wondering if that's a different material.
No, 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 that's, when you use, it's easy to make a mistake and not even notice it.
I'm sorry?
It should be stucco.
Okay, yeah.
It should be the same texture.
The intention's not, it's not going to be a paintboard or something like that.
It can take like a certain point and not, you know.
Just want to clarify that, yeah, all right.
Yeah, yeah. And then these, they're, so of course, in the ski, there is no stucco molding, so those are the stone molding, you know, around the little grass here. We're going to repeat the detail right here. This, we broke that down, instead of the same detail again, because that's what you would do, you would have all these little details going on. And of course, I do agree, you know, the size of the house, with all those different shaped windows, and it looks really awkward, but nobody, nope, because you're never going to, you only have, you know, five feet, and you never enjoy the view of the windows being all different, it just doesn't happen. Nobody stands here, the fence right to their back, completely that side of the house, you just walk there, because you walk the dog, you're taking the trash out, and that's all you do, and you never notice the, I mean, never happens. So that's why we didn't care to change them. The house is theirs, got good bones, it's a regular framing, it works really well, we put the windows back where they were and all. But then we improved it a little on the other side.
Have you shared your plans with the neighbors on either side?
Have you yet? No, no.
I'd recommend it, I highly recommend that, actually, because sometimes we do have people come in, and they're worried about the specific location of a window looking into their, one of their rooms, so. It's a real good idea to meet with the neighbors and show them what you're doing.
Sure.
Okay.
Have you considered to break up the amount of stucco, any kind of base treatment, like a stone veneer or anything like that, or a water table?
No, actually, no, the, the house is going to be in style, well, the wrecking material's not going to be on the building itself, because it's actually in style of Mediterranean or Spanish or colonial. And so we're going to have clay tiles here, going to replace the existing one, make it nicer. And then you're actually expecting to be a stucco with not too much detail. But what you usually expect is the trim, and the windows are really nice. And that just pops out really well. So you got nice mahogany windows or cladding windows, I think we're going with a cladding this time, so dark brass, which really pops, you know, thick ones. And then around it, wood trims or stone trims. And that really does the whole thing. And then you can imagine, I mean, if you look at all the plans, and you really had little bugs in front of you, and you just turn it a little bit, because that's really how we experience things, we're always moving around. It would never be like a static big chunk of stucco. It's too small for that, basically that. It would be if the whole house was just like this on each side, you know, flat, splash before size, but we actually tried really hard to get away from that. And the house had some good things, I mean, that roof was already sloped this way, we had a little one here sticking out, we added the one in the back. But actually, no, we had some good surprises when we tried to work it out.
And then I think one of the staff comments in their report was just a possible recommendation of either lowering the number of windows and/or, I'm adding this part, the second part, lowering the amount of window types. Have you considered that at all? And if not, why?
Yes and no, yeah. And I do have an answer for that, so if you could break that up again, we have the existing elevations and the new one. So partially answering your question, this is the new elevation. This where actually everything's new. This is new, this is new, this is new, this is new. So we're very conscious about treating it like that, making sure things are aligned. Again, these are actually fairly small windows, they only have four square feet, they're two by two. So although there's a bunch of them, it's really just more an architectural effect from the inside. This is, and these are the two small windows you would expect, they're actually the, right now like that, around the chimney. And these, they're really just to bring some light from there. So this is the one we did, it's pretty much aligned, it's consistent, it's a couple of types, you know, it reads well. This is the existing building. This is the old one. And we just decided, it actually works fine for the inside, to be honest. And you can't really see it from anywhere. You can't really see that from anywhere too. I mean, you can see this, you know, that part of it. And stand here, you can see the roofline, and this, you really just can't see it. You really can't, I mean, you get six feet to the property line. So it reads like this, when we look at it like that and we're focused on it, the truth is, it's not this in reality. It is built like that, but it never feels like that. Because there is absolutely no way to look at it from further than six feet, which is basically just this. And if I go like this, I cannot appreciate that the windows are not aligned, big, small. I can see through them or not, but I can see, and this could address it. But the overall look, it makes sense when you get some perspective. Here, it's just, I mean, I work on about 100 of those, like between Berkeley, Oakland, and here. And when you're in a very dense area, there's things that actually matter to focus on a lot. And that's one of the things I find with experience that is least important. Like, if you have to let go of something, that's a good thing to let go. Because even if you fix it, it doesn't really make a difference, to be honest. I mean, it does on paper, but in reality, though, doesn't really.
And I guess I, because, so that's all good and whatnot. So I'm trying to actually look at it more holistically in terms of the language of the windows. And so right now, I mean, just for example, you could look at, I mean, I think you have about 11 different window types. Some are existing, some are new. But even within, say, a programmatic piece like the bathroom, that has like three different size and types of windows. And so my experience professionally as an architect has been that you try to somewhat have a language of the windows, so that, say, the bathroom windows all are the same size, but your proposed plans, you've not done that. And so I'm just trying to figure out.
No, and I, yeah, and I agree. And again, it has to do with the perspective of the house, the amount of perspective you have to the project. By perspective, I mean distance to look at it.
I get the whole, I get the whole seeing and, no, please, sir, I'm speaking. I get the whole seeing and perspective, and seeing it, I get that. You've repeated that. It's crystal clear. But we are looking at it as an architectural project with the elevations. And so that being said, instead of dismissing it, I guess, I'm looking for more reasoning why, besides just simply...
And the reason is, I was going to say, because I looked at it from the inside, what purpose do the windows serve for the inside? Which is the point for this project, where we actually appreciate those windows the most, is from the inside of the house. Not from the, for the main elevation, we really tried to get it, you know, to compose something. For the back one, it was going to be visible from the street, yes. For the side ones, I focus on the inside. What is the purpose of the window? It's a different approach. It has the value it has, you know. But if I need a small window, because that's the function of the room, and it doesn't participate in my point to the, to the way the building really looks, because there's nothing to see there, I put the window that suits the interior. I do this for this project, for other project, I totally follow what you're saying. Where we, you know, we get down there, we put the windows, and then we re-line things, we reshape stuff to actually make the exterior work as well. Here, again, my point of view is that it's less important, I mean, I'm happy to disagree, and we're happy to change it. But again, we didn't drop, we didn't make it like this. It's the existing that we kept. And I really want to emphasize that. On the other side, we can see it's organized differently.
Couple of questions. So the interior plan, this kind of really nice wide steps going down to the, to the living room kitchen area, that's existing?
No, those are new, actually.
Those are new?
The house stops pretty much somewhere around where the stairs actually go down.
All right, so currently that pops, that's the backyard at that point. And so this is, the living room kitchen is the addition part.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And the master bedroom on top of it.
Okay, now I'm getting it. And then you're going straight up, and then you're adding there. So you have a balcony on the north side of the master bedroom?
Yes.
Why didn't you want the south side with the view?
Well, the balcony was, in a way, I thought would work to give windows to that side of the wall, give it a sense of space, without bringing the windows in here and giving the view to the neighbors.
I was wondering why you didn't, why you didn't just totally switch around?
Oh, like this?
No, like the bathroom and the closet on the north side, and the deck on the south side. Am I right that that faces the bay?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, I just thought that was the view. Maybe I have my orientation wrong, but I thought that was the view out there.
No, no, I, I don't have a preference. They're actually just about the same size, I don't know why, to be honest. Maybe, you know, the split entrance would be the, like, the entrance being here, having this balcony on its side to bring a little bit more, you know, more space.
Yeah, you could send somebody coming, and you could see the advantage there.
Well, I'm just curious if there's a functional reason, you know, maybe, like, I looked at that and just assumed that you wanted the bathroom above the other bathrooms. But maybe that's not...
To a point, yes. Yeah, we try to, but with wood framing, the good thing is, if you don't really do those things, it still works pretty well. Because the truth is, those houses are not just big enough, so that technically, the plumber cannot just make it work.
Okay.
If anything, it'll just went in a small bowl. But those things tend to work pretty well, actually, yeah. It is a bigger issue, actually, when we have, on the first floor, we're actually going to do a slab on grade. So there, you want to work your plumbing, but then we're just going directly to the, technical, but to the, to the sewer, that's smartest to the house. Other than that, no, it's really good.
It's not that I'm imposing that view, I just thought it might be a lost opportunity, that's all for you. There's a view appearing, I'm sorry. There's a view you want to capture on the second floor, or you're on that deck. Is the view better on one end side of the building than the other?
No, 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 it doesn't really make a difference. The view is fine. But there is not a better view on any side of the house, it's actually pretty much the same view.
Oh, okay. Oh, the, okay, no, I answered, oh, so the other one was the rear elevation of the house, you have those really tall, looking out towards the yard.
This one?
Yeah, so those are, those are, those are all open, right? It's a transit?
Yes, so that would be, so those are fixed, and these are the folding doors, they're completely open. And it says, I think this is eight feet, and we're at 10 feet at the plate, I got to check the plans, but... Is it 12? Yes, we got a 12-foot ceiling in the living room, so the top plate is 10. The same thing, those windows are really big, but again, the person standing would be about just that, like, that'd be eight, you know, it just gives a lot of light.
So if the house steps down three feet, right, from the, no, actually, no, it goes up. Goes up and then it steps down.
The rear is lower.
The rear slopes down. So it kind of goes like, if we have the front on that side, and then the rear here, it goes, ah, it's almost flat, and then it goes down. By the time we're down at the house, we only went down just a couple of feet, then it kind of continues, and then it drops towards the end.
Right, you go up to the end of the house, you go down, you're pretty much in the same spot, just the...
Yeah, yeah. And really, what we're doing, so it's, it's not flat, I mean, it does drop, but the three feet we're going down is just an extra foot from going up in the first place.
You don't see that on the gateway, you can see the, the...
And then that means we're going to catch the grade when we open the door without having to put a deck. So we can have a patio, and then just make it work. And within probably 10 feet, then it has to be landscape and maybe a small retaining wall or little blocks, I mean, six inches, 10 inches, a foot maximum.
Could you flip to the landscape plan? I thought I printed that out, but I don't have it.
I'm sorry?
I'm having you flip to the landscape plan. I thought I printed that out, but I...
It's on the cover, it's on the, it's on A1.
A1?
Yeah.
Is it?
No, no.
My A1.
No, it's not, sorry.
A10, right. Well, I don't really, I mean, all the species are, look fine, I don't know what they call it, but I didn't see any trees on this. Are you locating any at all? Or is it just all those?
I think we're putting a tree in the front. Definitely not in the back. I mean, we could, but it doesn't necessarily call for it.
I don't know if you have to have it, it's just that it's kind of nice to contribute a little bit to the...
I think we might have had one, but we probably removed it. Because we have to put one, right?
The mitigation, I think you have to plant a tree.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to put one.
There's a requirement for a tree.
Yeah, no, I think I just forgot it, because we did another project in Albany, and we didn't put a tree in the front. I thought I had done.
And this one is...
No, we did put it, I'm sorry, but it's in the, in the 24 planter strip in front of the sidewalk.
Okay, there.
So we put a, we did put a, a city tree, not a private one.
All right. So my only minor comment on this was the entry to the front door. It's almost like a little obscure maze-like walkway to get there. I can see nice direct from the parking lot to, sorry, the parking stall to the entry that works smoothly. But if you're coming off the street, it's a little, could be clarified.
I agree, I think we could try to do that a little bit more.
Yeah, right.
Something here, yeah.
A little, little clearer. Especially with the door on the side of the house, it's not, it's not intuitive that... Especially with the door on the side of the house, it's not, it's not intuitive that where the door is, and especially sort of.
For this, I mean, I did this myself, and it's not my domain of expertise, and we're, we're gonna get a landscaper to actually, uh, help.
Okay, great.
You know, design, put, write textures, and I mean, it's, it's not an expense, but it still can be better than that, yeah, I totally agree.
Understood. Okay, any more of the question? No. I think we, I think we heard.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we're just discussing it, we're not really.
Public hearing.
Oh, sorry, thank you very much, yeah. So now open up for public hearing, uh, a lot of discussion already. Anyone care to come up and speak to the project? No comments, so I guess I'll close public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any, any thoughts or discussions you want to share with the architect and the owner?
You wanna start?
Um, sure, I mean, I'll, I'll have this kind of as a discussion amongst us, uh, first. But I guess what I was getting at with the window language was, if, if I remember correctly, you asked, and this was a McGregor? And so since this is a McGregor house, um, I know it's kind of like the Albany jewels, um, that, that's what I was getting at, was that if there's an existing language of windows, uh, then I would suggest that maybe we kind of consider that when looking at the new windows on the other elevation. So when they put in a new window in the bathroom that already has a McGregor style or size window, I don't know, maybe match that, instead of putting in a giant window that doesn't play off of or reflect the McGregor style at all. And so I think, right now, the building has two sides, if you will. It's like, sort of modern version, and then it's the old McGregor version on one side. And they don't quite jive together for me. So that's kind of what I was getting at with the notion of the language of windows.
I would, I would definitely agree with you. Um, I actually have a handful of comments, um, just sort of about the, more the, um, exceptional design standard that we're gonna have to make as part of this. So I mean, as it relates to the parking exception, um, I'm, I'm confident in being able to make the, the findings for the parking exception. Um, but I don't feel like right now that I could make the findings for the exceptional design. Um, and I do have a, a handful of points. Um, and this is very much for me predicated around the fact that this is a McGregor home, and I do feel like, um, the McGregor's are the jewels of Albany and should very much, the existing architectural style should be respected. Um, and it should be a very integrated design, and I appreciate the architect's comment about, um, you know, the desire to have this feel integrated. I just don't feel like we've really, um, hit the mark on that. Um, so as it relates to the, the volume of the addition in and of itself, um, I do feel like with McGregor's, what you typically see is sort of a half-flight and a half-flight every time there's an addition. So this building right now kind of has that one half-flight, and I feel like it would be more appropriate to do sort of a half-flight coming up to the opposite side using a gable roof rather than a hip roof. I don't think a hip roof is actually an appropriate architectural style to be integrated into a McGregor home. Um, I do also feel like just the massing at the back is a little bit big and out of scale. Um, perhaps once redesigned, the volume could, could feel a little better, but right now, it does feel a little too massive and out of scale, um, in my opinion. Um, windows, I, I just echo everything, um, that you previously said. Um, I also don't feel like aluminum windows are appropriate here, I think they should be wood, um, possibly aluminum clad wood windows. But, um, I think with McGregor's, they really should be wood-framed windows. Um, the arched windows, I just don't think are an appropriate architectural style. Stone trim doesn't feel appropriate, these should be trimmed out in a traditional sort of stucco way with just the really small sort of reveal of a wood trim with a nice sizable, um, deep reveal to the window. Um, the, on the existing front facade, and I don't know if this is just a drafting issue, but it looks like the existing picture window is not shown with the existing muttons. Um, and the proposed is showed with what looks like either a slider or a casement or something going on there. Um, I don't think that's appropriate, I think the existing mutton pattern, that's sort of original, should be retained or, or replicated if they do need to replace that window. Um, similarly, the window above the garage, it should, in my opinion, be a, a double casement, not a slider there. Um, and then, let's see, I guess my last sort of primary comment on this is that the, I think the existing entryway should also be retained in terms of having that recess. It looks like this is very much a twin to the neighboring building, and the neighboring building does also have sort of that nice recessed. Again, they're, they're simple, these are small McGregor homes, but I think that, um, that style and that recess of a side entry, um, should be, should be retained. I don't think it needs to be anything more or anything less, I think just sort of retaining that existing architectural style. So, um, all in all, to me, at least, there, there do need to be a lot of changes, um, uh, to the volume, the architectural style of this building, and to really have all of the cues that are picked up respect, um, the McGregor architectural style.
Can I ask clarification? When you said the front entry recessed, I thought it was recessed. Is it not, is it not being recessed anymore?
On the plans, it kind of looked like that recess was going away. If that's not the case, if they're retaining it as is, then that's fine.
I think it's being more recessed, actually, it looks like it's a bigger.
I mean, to me, at least, the entry of these buildings are sort of character defining features of these McGregor's. There are a few key features of these homes that I think are really important to retain, and I don't, just don't think the entrance should be touched, um, from that regard.
If I may, I, I just touch on that, I think the entrance is gonna be maintained, the existing.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's what I, looks like from the drawings. But, um, also, I, I also want to do a follow-up comment that I agree with what Commissioner Kent said earlier, and that I think the, the pathway to that main entrance could be more defined as, as the architect and Commissioner Kent described, whether it be in the landscaping treatment, um, it doesn't have to be very, uh, sort of invasive in terms of architectural style. Um, and the only other thing I would say, just kind of a follow-up to your comment, Commissioner Wadi, would be that, um, if that front arched, I hear what you're saying about the arched windows, and I, I guess I could have a little more leeway in terms of the larger arched windows, um, and if that front one is an existing, uh, sort of, uh, window, then I'm fine with that, and trying to kind of play off it with that upper arched window that's, has the same width. But the, I definitely would agree with you in terms of those smaller arched windows, that that just doesn't quite feel right.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't meaning to get rid of the existing picture window, that, I think that should be retained, sort of with its existing architectural intent. I was more referring to the vertical addition elements seem a little, um, sort of faux historicism.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah.
In keeping with the architectural character.
And I definitely agree with your, your, um, your comment about the, the wood, uh, the window materials. I think, um, I, although I do appreciate the nicer materials of the stone that you're proposing, I think, um, if we are to try to push this, to try to maintain more of that McGregor style than, uh, than a, a wood trim with wood clad or wood, um, wood windows would be more true to it.
Yeah, and I, I kind of felt the same way you did about the new windows on the front elevation, that, um, I, I don't mind the big one, because I think it, it echoes the existing, uh, window with the rounded top, but the, uh, the additional smaller ones look kind of busy and not, not appropriate on the, the front elevation to me. Um, and then overall, I would also just echo the, the comments about the window language. I'm not concerned about the, the, where you were showing us the existing, um, you know, smattering of different window shapes. I, it's fine, you're not touching that part of the house, I don't think there's any reason to make you go in and redo the windows on that side. So I, I don't think any of us would, would take that position, but for the new parts of the house, um, aiming for a little more consistency, um, with the existing window patterns and the, the overall scale, um, of the house. Um, I did agree with one of staff's comments that I just wanted to highlight, uh, about the, the east elevation, or it's described as the east elevation, um, to the rear of the house. Um, it just, it does read as very flat, and i- if there's any way to give that some, some depth, um, or texture, I think that would, um, be a nice addition. Um, overall, I really appreciate the, the applicant's desire to, you know, invest in this house. It clearly is not in good shape right now, um, and I, I think that overall, with some tweaks, this could be a very nice addition to the, the neighborhood. Um, and I did wanna say that, you know, I also don't think there would be any, uh, problem in making the findings for the parking exception. It seems, uh, like this is the kind of case that the parking exception was really made for. Um, we're just, we're dealing with the site as it is, you're not removing any parking, and, um, it would be, uh, really onerous to, to try to require another compliance space. Um, just one other, this is fairly minor, but one comment I did want to make is that on the existing front elevation, um, it looks like you're missing the chimney and the overhang for the, the front entrance. So when that comes back, if you can try to, um, make sure that the existing elevations are accurate. Thanks.
All right, I, um, let's see, I appreciate the other commissioners' comments, and I don't think that any of, any of them I'd really disagree with. Um, I, uh, and I generally support the staff's comments, and I think you should work with the staff based on what we've said and what the staff's comments are in the report, um, to come back with a, with a project that, uh, is approvable. Um, this would be a great, a great improvement to the neighborhood, and, uh, and I suspect when you do talk to your neighbors, you're gonna be, you're gonna be welcomed, because they're gonna be very happy to see this house, uh, this house renovated. Um, I don't have any problems with the parking exception. Um, I, um, I, I do have problems with the rear addition I want to talk about a little bit. Um, but first of all, um, I want to talk about the, the, the staff, and the staff reported, talked a little bit about the, the front entrance being on the side and improving that with landscaping. Um, what I observe, I, I'm in favor of leaving the front entrance the way it is. I wanna, I wanna be, personally, I wanna be clear about that, and I, I kind of agree with you that I think it'd be, it would not be a good idea to try to change that. What I noticed about it, and Elizabeth, uh, hinted at it, is that it is basically a mirror image of the house next door, eleven oh eight. Um, and the two homes were built clearly, I think, with a, with a common design, with a flip, a flip floor, a flip plan. And you basically, you basi, the two houses, you and eleven oh eight, basically share one entrance, in a way, in a way. And visually, anyway, I thought. Um, and I would like to see you, um, somehow pick up that, and I think it could be done with landscaping. And ideally, in, in ideal, uh, world, I would like to see, uh, I'd like to see you and your neighbor kind of work together, um, so that your neighbor can agree on what plantings you do, and, and down that strip, and there's two concrete sidewalks walking in that go to the respective doors, they're parallel to each other. Um, I, yeah, I think it'd be, I think you could do something really nice, um, along that edge to sort of emphasize the entrance. Um, and it really would be the entrance to two homes, um, uh, in a, in, in a way there, so. Um, so, uh, so I don't have any, so, um, I'm, I'm happy keeping the, the entrance on this, on the side there. Um, and, uh, the staff had a comment about improved exterior lighting, which I think is important, I agree with that. And especially, especially with, uh, with the entrance on the side. Um, okay, and now for the rear addition, for the addition in the rear. Um, I'm not at all fond of the balcony. Um, I don't think it'll work very well. Um, and I, I believe that if you got rid of the balcony, you could, you could shorten the entire addition and still have, without losing any space in your bedroom. Because you have extra space there where you have a little corridor that leads to that balcony door. If you got rid of that, you can move the whole building in and make that, make the whole addition smaller. Why is that an advantage? Well, I went into the backyard, and you have a very narrow backyard, and this building is gonna really loom high over that backyard. And I think you're ba, I think you're taking up too much of the backyard, that's my personal opinion. And that, um, you will want to have, like, every, a bigger backyard, you're gonna have twenty-some feet, maybe. You're above the minimum, I realize, but if you got three, four more feet of backyard space to live with, I think it'd be a more livable, uh, a livable house altogether. Um, I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with those twelve-foot windows, um, coming out of the, out of the family room there. Um, it's in the backyard, I'm, just from a design review standpoint, I don't think I'll criticize them. If you want to have them there, um, that's fine. Um, but, um, but I'm, I'm not real fond of them, and I don't think you need to have that much light and air, that much light coming in with the western exposure there, um, especially when you're a little bit above the street below you. Um, that room is gonna be, with that much glass, that room's gonna be really hot in the afternoon. Um, on this side that we're looking at, those five windows that are high up looking into that, again, that same living room there, I think there are too many of them. And, um, and, and that's where I agree with the staff report and, and with Eric's comments, other commissioners' comments, uh, about, uh, about the window nomenclature needing to be simplified. And I, I just think there's too many of those there, they look awkward. Um, you, your neighbor's house, uh, you know, you'll be looking, those windows aren't gonna have views in them. They, so that, I, that's no consequence, really. But the balcony above it will look right down into your neighbor's backyard. And, and you say you probably won't be using it very much, I agree, it won't get much use, it's a northside balcony, it's gonna be cool. Um, um, and, uh, I, I don't think it will get much use at all. And I say, eliminate it, and then, um, and, and then, uh, use that space in that, in upstairs, uh, to keep your bedroom and not have that extra corridor, um, in there. And I think you'd still have a very nice room, and you wouldn't lose much, wouldn't lose much bedroom space at all. So, anyway, that's my thought.
If you put a, uh, put a, return it in that, that space, like a roof, and you can turn it and take it to the backyard, and then that will break down, we only have one room in the backyard. They take the space in the balcony, it's on the side.
Where you can, the back.
We'll have the building, we'll have the roof of the building, it will break the back.
Okay, all right, I think I understand what you're saying. Um, and Elizabeth commented on, Elizabeth commented on the roof form, too. I'm not quite sure I can visualize, uh, what your comments would lead to, but, um, consider those. Um, I, I'd say, consider those, yeah. I mean, I have trouble in visualizing how it would look with that suggestion, but I, I tend to agree with it, okay? Um, is there anything else, uh, that I have? No, I don't think so. Um. Yep, anyway, yep, that's it, that's good for me.
I just have a few comments, most of things were said. The windows don't actually bother me that much, I like the idea of, I, I can see, appreciate in the back room where the windows are up high and they provide a lot of light, but yet, it, so it creates a very light room, lots of wall space, you can, a lot in there. And you have that epic kind of view out into your backyard. Um, I was thinking that even, those twelve-foot-high window doors or ten-foot-high, they could be beautiful in the right setting, but I think they're a little bit on the pretentious side for a little teeny art, because I think they sprawl out and all of a sudden, it's like a dead end. Um, something to think about, maybe, I haven't been in the backyard, so maybe I'm wrong, maybe it is a wonderful space and it rolls out. It's something, I think the landscape plan will help balance that. It, um, it seems like it might become all of a sudden, feel kind of dated, like it was built with this great idea and then it never happened. Um, the, uh, I, I want to also echo what people said, I think it's actually kind of a nice structure and it'd be a really great improvement to the neighborhood, don't let that be lost, so we're, but we're looking at critical things here. Uh, the other, the landscape plan is hard for me to really get into, because I think, like you said, I think you did it, you just kind of spread plants around. The plants aren't bad, they're, they're appropriate, but the layout of how it'll function, people moving in and out of the front door, I think, was, wasn't really worked out right. And the rear, rear yard is basically just an open space, and, and you can do what you want back there. I think we're really, as a landscape, as a commission, looking at the public view space, so we're more concerned about the front. Uh, and the deck, I, you know, I don't, I don't, just, I think a deck is nice, but you want to put it somewhere it's gonna be used and capture the view, you know? And I think Doug, Doug said about looking straight down to the neighbors, once they see this, I think they will have a, they might not like that idea. So, putting a deck somewhere where it has least impact on peering into other people's, although the angle might be so sharp, maybe there isn't an issue, it's hard to tell. Um, but the deck, I don't think it's a terrible idea, but maybe, you know, I don't know what it's looking at, so what view you'd have. That's my comments.
Okay. I mean, the only other comment I'll add is, um, that I don't want to discourage you from the notion of using clerestory windows, I think that's a, a good detail. And I, I think, just from my experience, neighbors tend to appreciate that, so on those, on that south elevation where you're doing the new windows, I think that, that's a good idea, I think it's just the, either the number and/or type of windows that you use should be refined. Um, but yeah, and otherwise, I'm, I'm all for, um, I could approve the parking exception, the parking exception. It's just, uh, because the FAR is going to basically the highest allowable, it requires us to really go over this with a fine-tooth comb and make sure it meets exceptional design standards, so that's why we're.
That's right. Any, um, is that good input for you?
Yeah, actually, most of the thing, uh, I reported by last segment, we.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could you, because we're being recorded, and, and we can hear you fine, but people, they hear nothing.
No, so, yeah, um.
Yeah, sometimes I feel a bit differently, but I mean, when we work in those things, there's always, again, it's a, where is the good compromise? I mean, it involves everybody, but then the staff report actually is pretty good, it, it really details what the city really wants, and that's consistent with what they want with other projects, I mean, obviously, so we're gonna be following, following these, and then we'll clean up, clean up a few things. I think the biggest point that's gonna be helpful, the gentleman, Doug, I guess, if you want to bring that back up, please, a little bit, I just want to, well, over on this, this one is fine, if you can go down, I'd like to look at this one, the big ugly one. Perfect, so on the other side, we have the balcony right here, so when you were talking about this, I was thinking about how that compromises, so the square footage is, it actually works for upstairs, and having a balcony here, if you can, you know, visualize this, you have this much of the house from the backyard, instead of a balcony, we don't get the balcony, we actually put a roof, and we bring this back a little bit, and the roof starts, starts here, it's gonna break it down quite a bit, it's gonna solve a lot of things, and then we work the windows, I mean, that's pretty much easy, I mean, just make the windows bigger, so, I mean, align them a little bit, and then, I think the rest is in the, is in the staff report, so.
Yeah, that'll be, I think that'll be a big improvement, actually.
Yeah, no, no, it, it will, because, and also, we, we'll see it from three sides, I mean, I mean, from, yeah, except from the front, but you'll see from the side here and that, it'll just break it down quite a bit, yeah, without making it a fake thing, which is nice.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So where are we on the agenda? Let's see, oh. End items, seven dash two, study session for economic development strategic plan implementation, recommendations of zoning ordinance revisions to streamline commercial development review parking regulations. Would you like to present that to Gina?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. So we are meeting again tonight for the third study session on zoning ordinance revisions related to the economic development strategic plan. You recall last month, we discussed use regulations, we discussed parking back in March to some extent, and that's the focus of our conversation tonight. So in March, the commission exposed a range of, of feedback on parking issues, and so we've tried to narrow that down into a few key items that we're recommending to take forward, and we were thinking both about parking as it pertains to new construction as well as changes in use, and we're expecting, at least in the near future, more requests for change in use for retail establishments as opposed to new construction, so keeping that in mind. So just a recap on the strategic plan, this was adopted last September, and looks at restaurants and retail as the major sales tax generators in the city, and so we're trying to implement here program foresee revising allowed uses, design review and permits required, and parking ratios to remove obstacles to commercial retail development. And so our objective here is really to streamline the development review process, tonight we're looking at parking and the outcomes to increase well-designed and desirable retail and restaurants in the city. So these are the eight items with respect to parking that we discussed back in March. You'll see we've lost a few of them, and, you know, modified some as we've come along, and then again, last time we met in May, we talked about use regulations. So recapping the key issues around parking, this was a big issue discussed with stakeholders, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail, but one of the things we want to look at is what's, what's staff level review versus what comes to the commission, and what's more appropriate or less appropriate there. We do have some information about parking occupancies on Solano and San Pablo, we talked about this in March, but in general, the occupancy levels are acceptable, which is that eighty-five percent threshold, yes?
I'm sorry, I hope it's okay that I just kind of ask questions as we go. Just for my own edification, when you say stakeholders in your report, who, what specifically does that include, or who?
So maybe I'll jump ahead, and then we can come back to this slide. So the economic development strategic plan had a much more robust outreach process, and that group of consultants talked to a number of businesses, tenants, landlords, brokers, folks like that, and then we just went back and talked to a few people who regularly use the code, so not necessarily the same people, but again, sort of landlords, some of the tenants, I only talked to six people, brokers who are active in the community, but people who regularly use the code to kind of understand what some of the pinchpoints are in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So, the last bullet about current parking ratios, so here's just an excerpt from the zoning ordinance, there's two pages, over thirty-five commercial use definitions that have different parking ratios, so it's, it's just a little bit complex, so something that we're keeping in mind. So flipping back to the stakeholders, so these are the folks that sort of have their hands a little bit more dirty in the zoning ordinance on a somewhat regular basis. So this was the key feedback that we got from those stakeholders, first about concerns about drivers parking in the private parking lots that, that landlords operate, and then shopping in other locations, so not something that's easier to control, but that can bug them. Some sort of anecdotal data or anecdotal observations that residents have concerns about people parking in the neighborhoods and then walking to Solano in particular. There was general agreement that parking limits should be no less than thirty minutes, which is the current standard, so that people, sorry, ninety minutes, it's right on the screen, so that people can, you know, have dinner, do their errands, things like that, so that that was a, a good standard as it is. There was mixed opinions about the installation of parking meters, some people thought that it was already metered on Solano, and about fees in general, the idea of, of assessing an in-lug fee, where parking cannot be provided. And then there was a general agreement that the parking survey and waiver requirements just don't make sense, that it's somewhat of an exercise in locations like on Solano where there just is no physical ability to put parking on site, and then people are being asked to, to do a study, to request a waiver for something they really physically can't do without demolishing the building.
When we talk about parking surveys, are we talking about like the staff level surveys that you and Chris do?
Yeah, when, when you have a business where there's a change of use and it triggers a higher parking ratio, and we do a survey.
You guys kind of walk the area and do account, okay.
So it's like a occupancy availability within five hundred feet of the project site? So the first recommendation is about parking ratios, so again, the ordinance specifies specific parking ratios for each commercial use definition, so this is what results in that two-page list of parking ratios. The list of uses is somewhat dated, this would mostly apply to, well, it would apply to both new construction and change of uses, but one idea is to instead use a more blended approach, where maybe you have a blanket parking ratio for generally commercial uses, whether it's by district or within all the districts, and then some specific uses, like we know restaurants tend to have a little bit higher parking demand, so to just have a few different ratios, and these we would work with both the city's transportation planner and W Trans, one of the city's on-call consultants, to kind of get that, that range right.
Could I ask a question about that? That was one of the questions I had when I was reading the staff report, is whether personal services in restaurants were kind, were subsets of this general ratio, but it sounds like you're talking about having, those would still be treated separately.
Right.
So there would be a couple of particular categories, and then sort of like a catch-all blended ratio for other non-residential uses?
That was the idea.
That's the idea, okay.
So those are separate categories, those, those three at least.
Okay, great.
And then, as an alternative to that, right now, the ordinance says that the planning commission determines the parking ratio for uses that aren't listed in the code, and just that that's something that could be handled at the staff level instead. So if we ended up doing the blended approach, this might not be necessary because this provision, whether it's at the commission level or at the staff level, because we have this blended approach and we've got this catch-all, but this is another option if we don't want to bother consolidating those parking ratios.
And what's, since we're just jumping in, what's the recourse if they don't like the decision, the, the staff?
Well, right now, this is a, would this be a minor use, be a minorment?
It'd be a minor use permit, and it's appealable to the planning and so, on the commission.
So it's still, I mean, even this, it's still, essentially, it's notice, it's a minor public use, excuse me, minor use.
It's still a discretionary review.
Yes, it would be appealable to the commission.
Okay, great.
All the questions, sorry. Has that, what, I'm just curious about the history of, of that possibility of A2 happening, because it seems like in my memory that we've never had to decide that. Is that true, or has that happened very often? Has it happened in the last ten years?
You found a category?
No, I'd.
Let me do it, Reese.
I'd say indirectly, we've had, make that determination, in a sense where we've had projects come in that have been kind of a, kind of a, an unusual use, that's certainly not listed in the zoning ordinance, but they've become to, for us, to us for other reasons as well. I, you know, I can think like, I'm not sure what, Hopsey probably was a, was, was, might have been one.
I think it was at school, too.
There's, there's been others, there's cer, I think there've been others, you know.
Okay.
At school, the tutorial place, or the after.
Oh, that's right, mathnasium, that we have, yeah, the parking ratio for that, they needed a parking, a lot of times they've come to us because they needed parking exceptions as a change of use, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yes, so last month, we talked about sort of those hybrid uses, and right now, like Hopsey, that might not fit into one category, so the commissioner of staff may be making that judgment.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe just feel free to interrupt and ask questions as we're going through, because it seems to be working.
We're doing that anyway.
This is a study session, so that's.
Yeah, it's simple, I mean, I have a fair number of comments to make on the staff report, I don't know when I'm gonna, when to make them or what, and we're gonna have a public hearing, huh?
Well, I'm only, I'm only halfway done, if you want, I can, I'm open, so I can continue and.
Please, please continue. I think you should finish your staff report, and then.
We'll hold our comments.
And then, and then we can.
Okay, well, if they're clarifying questions, well, let's do that, but let's hold the comments then. Okay, so second point of four is changes in use. So right now, when a change of use is proposed on an existing property, it may trigger an increase in required parking if that use carries a higher parking ratio, and this is even if no additional floor area or improvements are proposed. So the example in the staff report is, is if you were shifting from retail to a bank, the bank has a higher parking ratio, and even on a small two thousand square foot floor area property, you could have to increase parking by two spaces. So one, it's, it's not quite clear that that actually corresponds to an increase in parking demands, that's one of the reasons we might want to look at the ratios, but two, again, you know, thinking about Solano, it just might not be physically possible to add those two spaces, so tenants have to come in, request that conditional use permit to get a waiver, do the survey, et cetera. So the idea is just to exempt, exempt a change of use request in, on Solano and on San Pablo from having to provide additional parking, regardless of whether that new use category has a higher or lower parking requirement. The one, the sub-bullet here, we were trying to think of a threshold, so if you're increasing floor area, then that doesn't count, you would have to, you would potentially have to provide additional spaces or go through some other administrative relief that we'll talk more about, but if you just were doing ADA or building code upgrades that you're required to do, then we wouldn't want to hinder someone from, from not getting this, this change of use exception. Makes sense. So right now, the zoning ordinance exempts the first fifteen hundred square feet of ground floor retail building area on San Pablo and Solano from off-street parking requirements. So this is really an incentive to have a small ground floor retail, a small tenant space, and so this proposal is to increase that exemption, and then also clarify that it's not retail building area, but retail use area, so that essentially multiple users within one building could take advantage of that. Right now, it's not really tracked who's getting that exemption within a building, so this would just allow the, a tenant space to get that exemption.
Wait, sorry, can you go over that again? Are you saying that you can combine multiple tenant spaces together to get to that, or the opposite?
No, it's more like if you have four suites in a building, right now, it's, it's not quite clear who's getting to take advantage of that initial fifteen, fifteen hundred foot exemption.
I see, okay.
You know, the building might have been built sixty years ago and different standards, and so today, when we're looking at it, if we're evaluating a change, well, really, this would more apply to new construction, but each, each tenant would essentially have that exemption, so this could be a much more influential requirement, but that's a judgment, maybe we keep it at the building space.
Okay, thanks.
So last one is to eliminate the survey requirement. So again, in some cases, parcels cannot physically accommodate parking on site when a change, a use change is requested, so the code allows for adjustments for uses in existing non-residential buildings with a series of findings, and this requires a major use permit, subject to review by the commission and preparation of a survey, and again, that this is sort of an exercise in locations where there really just is no physical room to place the parking. So the idea here is to eliminate the survey and waiver requirement, instead to process a minor use permit to allow a reduction in parking or to allow off-site parking, and this would just apply to existing buildings. So that's sort of the story for the recommendations independently, but if we think about applying them all together, what does this really mean? So this chart tries to look at what are the effects of each of these recommendations, and how do they address new construction versus changes in use, what might be their impacts and actually changes in parking stalls, I mean, will we actually see the number of stalls increasing or decreasing, and then some outcomes in the last column about what the effects might be. So going through this, the first row, the, the idea about doing blended parking ratios, so this I see mostly affecting new construction, so if, in particular, if we have the change of use exemption. So if we have, if we're exempting changes in use, it doesn't, it, it starts to matter a lot less if there's really different parking requirements between two different uses. So the parking ratios, we see more affecting new construction, and then it could go either way, if we have a blended ratio, some uses may end up with not having to provide as much parking as they would have under the current code, and some may, may have to provide a little bit more. So the parking ratios would, the blended parking ratios would both simplify the code and potentially also provide some flexibility for new construction. You have a developer coming in, do they know if they're gonna provide general retail establishments? They probably know if they're gonna provide restaurants, because they have to do ventilation and hoods, et cetera, but it allows them a little bit more flexibility at the start about what they're actually proposing in that ground floor space. The change of use, again, this is obviously just affecting changes in use and not, not new construction, don't see it having too much of an impact on actual, the actual number of parking spaces, because again, this is mostly occurring in locations like Solano where we really couldn't provide that parking anyway. So it just allows a little bit more flexibility for new businesses and tenants that maybe a landlord can, they know they can bring in a restaurant that normally have a higher parking requirement, because we've now exempted that change in use. The retail exemption is the one that would, would apply both to new construction as well as change, could, could apply to changes in use, and this could actually reduce the number of parking stalls required. So if we're increasing that threshold for when parking, if it goes up to twenty-five hundred square feet, when parking actually needs to be provided, this could actually reduce the number of stalls, particularly in new construction, if we're looking at like San Pablo Avenue. So this could provide somewhat of an incentive for mixed-use construction on San Pablo. And then lastly, the survey requirement, again, this is really applying to changes in use, properties that can't provide parking on site, we wouldn't be allowing a new construction project to request a waiver or reduction in, in parking. And this is just reducing costs for new businesses and potentially reducing the burden on staff and commission to go through this, this waiver and CUP process.
Gina, I had one question on the ground floor retail exemptions, so under this scenario, if this is what were to be adopted and somebody didn't, still didn't comply with this standard, what would the process be? Would that be still the, the minor use permit, or would that automatically come to the planning commission?
Right, so the idea is that that would, that would shift from a conditional use permit subject to review by the commission to a minor use permit subject to review by staff and appealable to the commission.
Got it.
And, you know, we wrote in here that the city may request some kind of reasonable documentation of why they can't meet that parking requirement, but not necessarily having to produce a parking survey or occupancy survey. having to produce a parking survey or occupancy survey. So, that's, that's it, again, this is a study session tonight, so we're looking for your feedback on these ideas for parking revisions, we've now talked about, you know, again, we've talked over three meetings, so we'd be looking to come back with an actual ordinance for your consideration, either in late July or September. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? No, I know you do.
Oh, go ahead.
Just the one other question, in the staff report, you did note that the City of Berkeley was also contemplating for Solano Avenue eliminating parking requirements for a change of use, did that end up going through as proposed?
So, it was a study session last week, I checked with the planner today, they also talked about how Albany was working on the same stuff. So, they had a study session last week, and they moved forward with all the recommendations, only, there were only the use, the change of use one related to parking, they're asked for some more information, and they're gonna look at it again, I think, in September, so they didn't take any action, it is moving forward, and that would apply to both San Pablo and Solano.
But their proposal was to exempt any change of use without an increase in square footage of being exempt from new parking?
Right, and they had something similar about sort of building code upgrades, but otherwise no.
Minor expansions for building code, yeah.
No, any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if it's appropriate now, or not, I want to make a, a comment with a sort of a global overview here, so, first, look at the staff report, and I noticed the, the policy that was passed, adopted by the Economic Development Plan, and, and the Economic Development Committee, and the strategic plan, and I noticed that its purpose is to have us look at the zoning ordinance to remove obstacles to commercial development, and it occurs to me that that is a, that is a, is a program that comes from the Economic Development Committee, it is never something that would be in our general plan, that's what bothers me about it. It is, it is a focus on, on, on smoothing the road for commercial usages along Solano, San Pablo, and in the, and on Cleveland, but we, we have obligations, I think, to have a more balanced approach, and I can only think of all my history on this commission, and all of the projects we've had, where we have to deal with the fact, on Solano especially, and on San Pablo as well, that we have residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent, so close to those commercial streets, and I think we need to tread very carefully here, and, and Jean, I, I'm trying to make an overview here, thing, I think we have obligations as a, looking as a, as a planning commission, not to implement this policy from the Economic Development Commission as it's given to us, I think we need to do our own work on, on this, and we need to consider a more bal, a balanced approach, that is also gonna consider the residential uses that are so close to this, that are so close to San Pablo and Solano. And, so, I, I, I need to look at it from that perspective, and I need to think back to all of the hearings we've had, where we have, we've had difficulty, we've had issues, we have impacted, we have streets adjoining these commercial districts that are significantly impacted. We're talking about parking standards, but we also need to be thinking about parking demand, and how any changes in our parking standards, and in our commercial standards, are going to increase or affect demand, as, and, and Jean's been talking about the number of spaces, and, and the requirements for providing parking spaces, but I think we also need to be looking very carefully at how, how any action we do here is gonna affect parking demand, so, that's just my overview comment, and I, I have other specific comments going forward.
Any questions of Jean right now?
No, not right now.
I have a couple of questions, so, one is, I was just curious, you know, in, in terms of integrating this with other planning efforts in the city, I was curious whether the, the city's climate action plan says anything about parking standards, or if they're, I, I'm just curious whether that, you know, intersects with that plan at all, and you may not have an answer right now, but I would just, I would be curious, maybe the next time this comes, comes back.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with the climate action plan, but just to, to point out one thing, within the general plan, there is Action LU3.C, Commercial Parking Studies, Evaluate Commercial Parking Requirements to Ensure They Are Consistent with National Best Practices, Support Shared Parking, Car Sharing Programs, and Contribute to Sustainability Objectives, so that kind of hits on two points, which obviously has, one is sustainability, and, and then, of course, you know, kind of working within, within the commercial standards and having this discussion.
Okay, and then, I, I'm also just curious whether, I, I know this economic development study was, you know, had particular objectives, and what we're being asked to do has, you know, there are particular goals there as well, so I don't want to suggest, like, a lot of mission creep, but I'm curious whether it also, whether there's been any review of, you know, bike parking availability, and, and provision of bike parking, that kind of thing.
Just, Joe, I'm clear, bike parking in terms of policy, or bike parking in terms of like, an inventory of what we?
Well, I guess both, I guess I, I'm, I was just curious whether there was any discussion, and, I mean, this kind of relates to the, the comment about demand, and, and impact, I, I'm just curious whether that was part of the, the overall analysis, and it's okay if the answer's no, just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've done much analysis in the way of bike parking, but with regard to inventory, the Public Works Department has completed an inventory of basically the on-street bike parking that we have throughout the city.
Okay, and, yeah, I guess I would just be curious to review the bike parking standards, so if, you know, there, there are requirements to provide a certain number of parking spaces for new development, and?
We, we did that on the residential side, the only thing that we put in there is just kind of formalizing a practice that we already did, is the encroachment permit process that we require, and businesses that, you know, similarly, they're required to, to provide the bike parking as part of a, part of a development.
Okay. A couple of particular questions, well, I guess we've actually covered a few of them, but on the, the proposal for the ground-floor retail exemption, I was just curious if the 2,500 number, like, does that relate to something particular, is there like a, is there, how was that number derived, was it just a, kind of a round number to increase from where we're at, or is it something more scientific?
It's sort of a mix of both, I mean, we did look at some typical business sizes, wanted to keep it small, that's sort of the maximum that I would suggest, because we're not seeing a lot of retail spaces any larger than that.
Larger, yeah.
That's sort of the maximum threshold, and you can see, a lot of these may be pushing the envelope a little bit, you know, we've gone and said, okay, here's sort of the big things we can do, and you may decide you want to pull it back, but I would, I would say that's sort of the maximum.
Okay, and then, my last question for right now is, in the, the suggestion to eliminate the survey requirement, it, the language here talks about a minor use permit to allow a parking reduction or off-site parking for existing buildings, I, I was curious when, you know, what are the circumstances where you would actually require off-site parking versus just granting a reduction or a waiver, like, what are the criteria that apply to that decision?
I'd have to look up the specific distance, but right now, the code has a specific distance that parking can be located off-site within X feet of the property, and so, if that was achievable, for whatever reason, leasing it from the adjacent property, then we'd want to do that first before we take the parking reduction.
Okay.
So, that's a way of sort of keeping, keeping some other options, and not just saying, okay, we're just gonna, we're just gonna let it go.
So, it's based more on what are, what's physically available, rather than what the demand is, okay?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'll open it up for a public comment, do you have any speakers?
Name is Todd Abbott, I'm an Albany resident, business owner, and on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and first, I want to thank you for considering this proposal, I, I strongly support it, I, I would just remind you that a vibrant business community is a quality of life, if, if, life issue for the residents, it is a boon to the residents, I, I know people who, you know, get their house, and, oh, we're, we're just a block from Solano, we're so excited, so it, it, it's important that we support the businesses, and, and we, we talk about balance, and I think for a long time, the balance has really been one-sided, and I think it's important, this is an effort to bring the balance back, is, is my opinion. So, generally, I support the measure, and, or the revision, and a lot for the reasons listed, but I, I would also add that, through the process that I've observed over the years, oftentimes, park requirements are used as leverage, they're used to delay or prevent a project, just because they don't like it for some other reason, and even if, you know, almost always, very frequently, in the end, the requirements are waived, that still is delay, and time really is money when you're paying rent on a space that you can't use, because it's got to go through, the, the wheels need to turn, so that I think this is very specifically an effort to kind of reduce that, to make it more appealing to the small businesses that can't afford that, they can't afford that weight, so we, that's why you end up with larger businesses, and more, you know, franchises, things like that, rather than the small individual who really can't afford the extra $12,000 in rent that they need to wait while it goes through two months of process. So, I think that's what this is about, to some degree, and I very strongly support this measure, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Alan Kane from the Solano Avenue Association, I'm also on the Economic Development Committee, however, I'm, I'm not here representing them, and cannot speak on their behalf. First of all, I just want to thank you for volunteering your time to the city, so I haven't met any, I've met some of you face-to-face, and others I have not, so I just want to say thank you for volunteering your time. So, I just want to ditto everything Todd Abbott said, I mean, hit the nail on the head, a couple of comments that I heard, just, you know, as the commissioners were speaking, I don't really have pity on anyone that moves in next to an airport, and then wonders where all the planes come from, I know there's a very strenuous relationship between residents and the businesses on Solano Avenue, when you move in next to Solano Avenue, you move in next to Solano Avenue with businesses there, and it's kind of weird to complain about them after you move in, I think people move into Solano Avenue or near it because those businesses are actually there, and so vibrant. Circling the block, I think you mentioned, you know, being green in the city, you know, and as you start to eliminate parking spaces, and people have to start circling the block, looking for parking, I think that has an environmental impact, and something that I didn't want to speak on, or wasn't, hadn't planned on speaking on tonight, but I thought was ironic, is there's a lot of discussion with the business when, before they open, about where they're gonna park, and what their parking requirements are, but I can cite several examples citywide recently, where businesses who had parking plans had their parking removed from them, so they go into a business, they go into a business location, they have to present a parking plan, and next thing you know, the front of their business is gonna be a bus stop, or you have a transmission shop in town for 50 years, and you had created a parking plan, and the city really put you through the wringer when you opened up in terms of parking, and now the front of your business will be a bike lane, so there's a big disconnect between the front door and the back door, what's happening here, and I just want to point that out, thanks again for your time.
Lee Larson, Albany resident, this was characterized as streamlining, I, I thought it was more accurately characterized as dumbing down parking requirements, in many cases, I think the effort here is to kind of obfuscate the, the, the real issues by hiding data, the, the first proposal was to consolidate parking ratios, certainly, if parking ratios are inaccurate, that's, that's not good, but I think the granularity that's present in the current parking ratios potentially allow a, a, a real assessment of what the impact of parking, of, of a project will be, substituting a one-size-fits-all, or maybe a three-size-fits-all approach, I think would be less sensitive, and provide less data. A2 is a proposal, I think, the, the DA, she already discussed it, it's silly, so we'll skip that, changes in use, again, a, a change in use can, we can always exempt, and we, we do exempt parking requirements, but a change in use can have changes in impact on, on surrounding neighborhood, I, I think we should assess that, we should assess that with accurate parking ratio determinations, and, and provide an information as part of the, what, we'll get to D, part of the public process of, of reviewing how good, how this project's gonna impact Albany, and whether it's, whether it's beneficial. Ground-floor exemptions, the, the only problem I have with ground-floor exemptions is, is they're not restricted covenants that run with the property, so, I, I think this only applies to new development, especially if you eviscerate the old requirements, that the only, so for new development, they may propose retail, but later on, put a restaurant in there with more intense use, or a, or a dentist's office, which you weren't trying to incent, so, so, increasing that from 15 to 25 just potentially increases that problem. My real problem was with D, with proposal D, first place, I, I think it's not accurately characterized, and it's, it's, it's almost disingenuous, that the, the issue here is not eliminating the survey requirement, the issue is eliminating the complete approval requirement, the requirement that planning and zoning, through a major use permit process, approve a waiver of parking requirements, that the survey is just one of three findings, the possible findings, so, so, the title here is silly, it's embarrassing, I, I, again, I think there's inconvenient data that may be hidden here, I, I would think staff, and the, and the commission, and the community would like to know what the currently available parking is, on-street parking, I think that helps in the process, so I think, I think hiding inconvenient data is never a good, never a good policy, I think it's consistent with the parking policy that we adopted for, for residential use, and I think it reflects to some extent an anti-automobile zeal that exists in Albany. Anyway, disappointed.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Close public comment, bring it back to the commission, discussion.
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in and get started here, my max on, generally, thank you to staff for this great overview and staff report, for the most part, I, I agree with all of the recommendations in here, but I'll sort of start at the top here, in terms of parking ratios, I do think there's a lot of validity in, in taking a fresh look at those, and seeing, you know, as, as we talked about in the previous study sessions of the different economic uses, I think, taking a fresh look at what the different zoning categories are, and land uses are, and really thinking about how those businesses are used in today's world, and what the actual parking demands are, I do think parking demands for certain land uses are different today than they were years ago, and so I think it's a good opportunity to take a fresh look at that, and if consolidating seems to make sense, I'd be all for that. You know, I'm not sure with the information we have provided that those three buckets are the right buckets, but I don't, I don't, at this point, feel like I kind of have enough information to feel strongly one way or the other, but I do think a consolidation of sorts would be really appropriate. As a result, in the, as it relates to the change of use, I think I mentioned this in the previous hearing we had on this, I'm very supportive of exempting parking at all, when it's just a straight change of use, particularly in the Solano Avenue corridor, and for existing, you know, existing buildings on San Pablo Avenue, that again, don't have curb cuts already, I think it's actually quite detrimental to our public realm and our economic viability to require new curb cuts in parking in buildings that don't have them, and I think that's very contrary to sort of the whole spirit of our commercial corridors, so, I'm very supportive of exempting change of use requests from having additional parking. For C, the ground-floor retail exemptions, the 2,500 does start to feel, you know, for new construction, a little bit on the, on the big side, for just saying carte blanche, no need, you know, those may be instances that we still want to, you know, new construction in general, I would imagine, would still be coming to the planning commission here, and, and having us look at those buildings, if it was a new construction, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it seems like for new construction, we may want to look at those, just in terms of how the ground-floor retail layout is proposed, you know, is it a mid-block location, is it a corner lot, where there maybe is an opportunity for parking to be provided with it out, without it being detrimental to the public realm, so, 2,500 seems like a, maybe a little pushing it, I, you know, I think maybe closer to the 1,500 or 2,000 would, would be fine, I do think there, to the gentleman's point, I think encouraging our small businesses, and really making sure that they get a little bit of the leg up, so that we're not overrun with the larger sort of chain store and franchise businesses, I think is a good thing, so anything that we can do as part of this, to give our, our small businesses sort of a, a slightly easier pass, is a good thing. And then lastly, on the elimination of the survey requirement, I, I would agree that, you know, for buildings that, again, don't have existing parking, and are doing changes of use. use, the survey just seems like a silly, futile exercise, at least from my perspective, going back to my previous comment about changes of use. Doesn't seem appropriate to require parking in those instances, so it doesn't seem appropriate to require parking survey. Now, in instances where we will be requiring parking or new construction, I think there, you know, could still be some validity in providing some sort of data, whether that's carte blanche, always requiring a parking survey. There could be multiple different tools that we could use to provide us with data that maybe aren't all sort of mandated 500-foot survey. So I can kind of, I can go a little bit either way on that when it comes to new construction and when parking is required and when we require a survey or not. But I guess those are my initial thoughts on the proposal, so thanks again to staff.
I guess I'll make a couple of comments. In terms of specifics, I would agree and support the recommendation of suggestion A1, the condensing of the categories. I guess, and this kind of goes back to what Commissioner Donaldson said earlier, I guess some of the things that the stakeholders and some of the key findings, being that, you know, the stakeholders believe that residents are concerned about employee parking on neighborhood streets, and they also talked about, you know, the parking limits. I guess my question is, it doesn't, I know the emphasis here is to encourage commercial growth, but it doesn't seem like any of these recommendations address that key finding of people parking on residential streets to use the commercial areas. And so I guess I would like to somehow be able to address that since that was brought up as a key finding. Excuse me. And then my other kind of general question, which I think is kind of related to what Commissioner Jennings was asking earlier and Commissioner Wadi, I'm curious as to the 2,500 in terms of, I know this might be more than your purview or just might be a sort of involved process, but I'm curious as to how many commercial areas, or not how many, but what's the percentage of square footage of the existing commercial businesses are affected by that change to 2,500? So for example, would that, you know, by changing to 2,500, would that now exclude 90% of the existing commercial retail spaces in terms of needing parking, additional parking if there was a change of use? Or does it only affect, you know, 25% of the commercial? Just so I could get an idea of what the effects would be in terms of its scope of the existing commercial uses. And so those are my kind of general concerns. I, yeah, I mean, and I guess I would hope that if we were to go forward with these recommendations that, I mean, one of my concerns, which I see constantly, are the unused storefronts in Albany on our Solano Avenue or San Pablo Avenue, more so Solano, I think, for instance, like the William Stout Bookstore. I would hope that these would be something that could help encourage to get that space filled by an occupant. And so it's a big sort of issue to deal with, all with just the parking regulations, but yeah, I would like to hopefully try to address both concerns simultaneously, if that makes sense. I don't know what that actually means in terms of the changes, but that's kind of what's going on in my head.
So I guess to start my comments, so I hear people commenting about, well, residents, I mean, there aren't any, there's only one resident here, apparently, or we're all residents, but, you know, speaking on behalf of the perspective of commercial areas, parking on residential streets, but, and maybe I'm in the minority here, but I guess I'm not, I don't really understand what the concern is or what, well, yeah, feel free to talk back to me. No, you can talk back, but I'm going to talk now, so.
It's your turn.
So, I mean, and I'm really asking the question, though. Is it a question, is it a concern about, well, we just don't like people who don't live in our block parking here? Is it a safety concern? Is it a concern about, like, people circling? Like, I really don't understand what the, if it's, because if it's just a, we don't like people who don't live on our block parking here, I don't think that's a valid thing for us to be trying to regulate their parking spaces. And it doesn't, it shouldn't really matter who is parking in those parking spaces, whether it's someone who lives, whether it's your next-door neighbor or someone who lives in a different part of town, or someone who lives in Berkeley who's coming to the area to shop in our community and pay sales tax. Like, I don't, I honestly don't see what the real concern is there, that there may be things I don't understand. But I, so I guess that, I'm not really, in the absence of data about why that is a particular concern, it doesn't really concern me for the same reasons that I think Alan mentioned about people who move to a commercial area and live next to it. Anyway, so for the parking ratios, I do, I also think we need a little more information about how exactly this would work, but in general, I like the idea of being able to apply some kinds of blended standards, partly because I think the kind of behavior we want to encourage is someone who, if they are driving to an area like Solano, I think we want to encourage them to park once and visit multiple businesses. So if you're parking to visit, you know, the dry cleaner and then go to Mr. Dewey's and then pick up some, you know, wine from the wine store, do we want, do we want them getting in their car three times and finding three different parking spaces to, you know, park in front of each business? No, like, you want them to be walking as, you know, as possible and parking once, but, you know, not just for environmental reasons, but circulation, et cetera. And I think it just encourages more foot traffic and ultimately is better for the businesses. So I think for an area like this, the idea of having really regimented parking standards, business by business, just doesn't really make sense in practicality. And I recognize that, you know, some businesses or some properties end up bearing the burden of supplying that parking. And I don't know, you know, how we address that kind of on a global level when, you know, what we're asked to do is look at project by project, but I think part of the way you can help address that is through applying more blended standards that both address the here and now and the idea that, you know, these spaces will change tenants over time. And so I like there being some built-in flexibility that accounts for the fact that businesses turnover, and you don't want to create unnecessary barriers to re-leasing that space. So I guess that goes to the change in use as well. And I also, I feel, I think, similar to other commissioners about the retail exemption, that I like it in general. I'm a little unsure about the size, the 2,500 sounds big to me, but I would be curious to hear if there, you know, if there are other precedents for this. And I also think that when we're talking about surveys for parking on a site where, you know, where there is no parking, where there's no possibility for requiring parking, I don't see any point in having someone go through those motions. In general, I guess I don't mind the idea of it being something that's approved at the staff level, especially if it's, you know, if there are really clearly defined criteria for when a reduction may be granted or not granted. And then I guess just a very global comment to wrap up is, I think, Anne, when you were talking about what the general plan says about, you know, reevaluating parking standards, et cetera, there was a mention of, you know, looking at, like, national best practices. And I think you guys have done some of that, but just in general, I think it would be helpful to hear a little bit more about, you know, what works in other similar communities or similar commercial districts, and maybe what doesn't work as well. So again, I think you did that homework, but actually, just hearing a little more about it would be helpful to ultimately make the decisions here. Thanks.
Okay. I don't know where to start. So a couple of trends we're seeing is, what we've been seeing in Albany, we've been seeing many changes of uses that have gone from retail to personal services. And that is a, and that is a trend where the parking demand is increases. I think that we can say that for those change of uses. That's what's happening on Solano anyway right now and probably San Pablo. At the same time, we're all of us as planners are moving away from an auto-centric environment to realize that a lively downtown, a lively community has to have more than that, and it has to have ability for pedestrians, bicyclists, and everybody to circulate. So we're looking, we're seeing more complete streets coming in. And complete streets means it makes parking harder, and it reduces, it eliminates parking spaces, what Alan was talking about, the transmission shop that suddenly loses parking for its customers.
I just want to clarify something on that. There is no parking right now that's lost. There was, there was a potential for a cycle track, and right now, that, the future of that is indeterminate, and it may very likely die on the vine.
Okay, okay.
So just so we're clear on that.
And I don't, I didn't know anything about that, what he was referring to exactly. But anyway, we are seeing that trend. And so we're, I think that we're in a, we're in a difficult and an interesting point here, and we need to be real careful about it. I worked on the zoning code, I worked on the table that did all of these. We had, the old zoning code was controversial, we had a lot of trouble and, with it, and I think we started in the year 2000 and we finished in December 6, 2004. And this table took a number of meetings to put together by a number of people, and we basically went over each and every use carefully. I know things have changed since then, and I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not saying we shouldn't try to simplify it and consolidate it, but there are many uses in here that don't have a specific number attached to them, that have, that have explanations on them. We need to look at those. It's going to be hard to consolidate this table, and I think this commission should get involved in that, and I think with some input from, you know, up-to-date traffic engineering practices about what communities are doing with respect to parking ratios. I'm a little worried about change of use exemptions, and I really, I'm really mostly worried about cutting off, of taking actions here that's going to cut off the opportunity for aggrieved citizens to come to the Planning Commission to hear us out, to let us hear them out. We haven't turned, this commission does not have a history of turning down development, but we are an important forum. And in fact, we see some of those projects, we look at the parking survey, and then we can say, as representatives of the city, we're not so worried about your parking impacts on Pomona from the Zumba event in the bottom of Church on the Corner, which was a big issue for us. We had everybody from Pomona Avenue in this room complaining about the parking impacts. The parking survey said, well, isn't that bad? Not that bad. And when we do a parking survey, we say, well, if you can park within 500 feet, you're okay. If you are, the neighbors don't get that. The residents of our community do not get that. They are used to having a parking space in front of their house. They kind of consider it as their own, and they know intellectually that, no, it's not, it's a city space, it's a public space. But it is an issue, it is an issue. Commissioner Phil Moss was on this commission for 16 years, something like that. I served with him. He lives on Santa Fe, and he favors commercial development on Solano. He supported it all the time, but he always was having trouble, always having trouble with people blocking his driveway, calling the police, best friends with the traffic cop, you know, kind of thing. And that's, that's the dynamic we have to deal with here. It's not here in this room tonight. I'm disappointed that it's not. We had the project on Ordway a couple of years ago, the orthodontist's office. It was a new development, it was a new development. But Ordway got really well organized there, and they were concerned about parking. And it came to this commission, and this commission had two or three hearings on it, but we got right down to the nitty-gritty and tried to figure out a few extra street spaces where that would happen, that changed the development around, and modify it, and look for spaces. That's something this commission can do. And I think that, I think that if we go too far here, and I'm leery of, I'm leery of doing too many use permits at the staff level because it's going to take out the public's chance of having a public hearing in front of Planning and Zoning Commission. And I don't want to destroy the chances of Solano. I want, I support more development. I support, I think Solano is getting livelier despite the parking, the big parking problem that all the applicants are worried about. I think that people are still coming to Solano. It is improving. I think the Complete Streets project we're working on will improve another segment of it, and may affect parking, it may affect parking. And that, it's within, it's within the responsibility of this commission to be the forum, to balance the concerns of our residents who feel aggrieved and the desire of people to run a business and expand their business on Solano. So I don't know, that's my overall point of view, and I would probably, if given a number of these things right now, I would probably say, well, I'm going to have to vote no, you know, I think, I think we'll leave it the way it is. And I want, I don't want to have to do that, but I want to look carefully, and I want to try to think about what might be the implications of taking these actions. This might be going too far at this point for me. So parking ratios, I've talked a little bit about that. We need to look at this table closely, and we need to look at what staff proposes, if there's three or four different general ratios, how it's going to, how that's going to change things, really. I agree with A2. I think that when there's a question about the parking table, that it's fine for the staff to make a determination rather than it coming to Planning and Zoning Commission on that. And I think in many of those, some of those cases is going to come to us anyway, that's been the case before, for other zoning reasons. And, you know, probably that was the case with the Zumba, the Zumba in the basement of the church, I can't remember exactly. Change of use exemptions, I'm very leery of this. I think it's kind of, we may be kind of creating a loophole here for, that will, that will support in unintended ways the trend that's going on from retail closing and personal services moving in, and the personal services having a higher parking demand. And I did permits for Berkeley on the project on, up there on Calusa. They had an office on the second floor permitted by Berkeley, they did a change of use, and they wanted to have medical offices up there. And I think it was right for Berkeley to require a use permit. Berkeley did not exempt that, they don't exempt at the time. It was a change of use with a higher parking ratio, and we did a zoning report on it, and I think it was appropriate to do a zoning report, and it went to the Zoning Adjustments Board. The project was eventually approved, but that's because they have parking in the basement of that building, and it was underutilized, so they had, they, we could take a look at that. And I'm not, so I'm not so certain about going too far about exempting changes of use. Ground floor retail exemptions, the 1,500 versus the 2,500, I agree with Commissioner Jennings on that. Let's take a closer look at that and maybe find out what the right number is, and it'd also be interesting to know how many storefronts of what's, of what size or in what size we have along Solano anyway for that. And eliminating the survey requirement, I'm skeptical about doing that. It's true, and we're not doing surveys in situations where there's no parkings available anyway, and there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, that, maybe that's the way people see it. But those surveys... But those surveys are important because they provide information to Planning and Zoning Commission that can say, yeah, there's parking on the residential streets, there's parking on nearby streets, so we can approve this use. We will, in, at some point run up, and we've come closer, we've come close, I think there was one project on Canes where I know I would have voted against it if they didn't have their off-street parking. I think it was a, probably a residence and, maybe a duplex, and a, probably a duplex, building a duplex, and they had plenty of space for off-street parking. But, but I would have voted against it if, if they would have, if that project would have added more street spaces, because they were in an area that our per, parking survey showed was very congested. And that just would not have been right to the residents to do that. But they provided four off-street parking spaces, so, cool, that's good. But that's why those, that's what those parking, that's the purpose those parking surveys show. They're, and they're not terribly burdensome, they're not very terribly difficult to do, and our requirements for, for these parking surveys are minimal compared to some cities. I, geez, I know, I think I've done some in some places where you had to go out at four or five different hours of the day, and different, and different, week, different weekend scenarios and that sort of thing, to do a real good parking survey. So I don't think ours are very burdensome, I don't think they're very burdensome to the staff, and I'm, I'm, I'm skeptical about, about eliminating them in the name, in, in the, in the, in the name of making it more convenient for applicants on Solano and San Pablo. Anyway, I think that's, that might cover it. Okay, yeah.
Just to, and just to follow up your comment about the, the sort of dichotomy between the residential and commercial, and, just my sort of anecdotal experience has been that typically with a lot of commercial projects where there's a change in use or bigger parking requirement, that the residents that directly abut Solano Avenue on either side have been very vocal in terms of it affecting them, and some of the things they talk about is either the added noise from people leaving or coming and going, blocking their, their driveways so they can't use it, or things like, you know, knocking over their trashcans when they're out, stuff like that. And so I do agree that it is, and I think Commissioner Kent has said this too, that those on-street parking spaces are the public's parking space, and they don't belong to any residential building or person proper. But I do think that there has been a lot of friction in terms of the, the interaction between people using those spaces, who may be using it for the commercial and residential, and I think in general, historically, the, the parking and just the vocal residents have, have created roadblocks for large-scale commercial developments, and that it sometimes has been tied to either their concerns with parking, or the use of the residential streets for access to the commercial businesses, whether it be their delivery trucks or whatever. And so I think that's one of the, kind of, the concerns, and I think they've been very vocal and had a strong influence on, on the commercial development, which I think Todd was kind of referring to when he first started. And so, and so, yeah, it's, it's that kind of give and take, and where do you find the perfect balance? And so that, and so I have seen a lot of people come and voice those concerns and complain about that in the past for projects, and so although in the recent days we haven't had many people come to really talk about that, it, it has, at least in my experience in the past, been a, a big concern. And so I think that's where it's coming from. That being said, I, I would, my only other comment would be about, yes, just more clarification on the scope, and, and maybe when I was talking about how much would be, how many businesses would be affected by the 2,500 square foot for the retail exemption. I'm for it, I just want to make sure that, you know, even if we just see a little brief graph that says 25% of our businesses are 1,500 square feet, you know, 30% are 3,000 and whatever, just so I can get a, a better kind of grasp of, of its effect. And finally, for the survey requirement, I'm kind of on both sides. I, I think it'd be great to make it easier for commercial development, and I also just kind of, I think the survey provides good information, but I, I wish that it was a little more scientific, if you will, because I know basically right now, it's, it's just simply Anne or Chris walking the streets to see how many cars are parked there, but, and I guess I say scientific in sense of like, you know, what are you guys using for a typical car size when you kind of decide that there's so many open spaces, or you're just kind of guessing by thumb, or? And so I guess I would like, if we're gonna keep it, to have it be a little more scientific, so to speak, and, but otherwise, I do kind of agree with Commissioner Donaldson, that I don't think our survey requirement is very burdensome. You guys go out, you know, once or twice during a day to check the parking, but, yeah, I don't know.
It's useful, I think it's useful.
Last thing I will say, I just, I wanted to be clear, like, I don't, it's not that I don't care about the residents either, it's just, you know, and I live somewhere where, yeah, right. I mean, I live somewhere that, you know, people use the front of my house to drop off their kids at Ocean View, like, during the school year, like, every day. Like, so I, I mean, I understand there, but we live in a parking-constrained environment, and I'm, I'm just, I don't want to like jump to the conclusion that somehow, you know, that little, these tweaks are necessarily going to make life hell for the residents of Albany, when I, like, I don't think we have any, I, I just don't have the information to support that kind of claim, looking at the changes that we're talking about. So if those concerns are out there, like, I would like to hear them, you know, voiced in it, and try to deal with them, but, yeah, that's where I'm coming from on it. I do care.
Sure, sure.
Let's see, I'll say a broader statement. We have, we're one-car family, I gave up the car about three, four, maybe, actually five years ago, and first year and a half, 18 months, was kind of awkward, I always missed the car, but I felt like I walked through, after I got used to all the public system, I used the bus, the Bart, Uber, Lyft, everything coordinated, I felt like I walked through a doorway, and everything was pretty easy, and I really need that time on the bus to do my emails and do my reading, I really need that time alone, you know, when I'm driving, I don't, I'm, I'm, so when I'm driving, I'm wasting this time. And when I'm going to, when I walk down Solano, when I take the bus down Solano, it's a great place. But if I'm on a car in the weekend trying to get something in Solano, it's a very frustrating place. So it's really, it's, it's kind of a watershed moment for a lot of people. I think many of us in Albany are still relying on our cars, we have, we can get by without two, three cars, with a broken one in the driveway, and one in the, behind that, and one in the front, and having, but they're so used to that, they don't make the change. Not everybody, some people need the car, and some people have to be two, three-car families, some houses, everybody's working different places, I know that, but there are some, there's a big percentage that are just using it as a crutch. So I think there's a lot of room and improvement here. So I think a lot of these things that has been discussed are, are implementable and good, and I, but a couple that jump out was the A2 staff review. I think that's fine, but I, do you really want to take that kind of heat? That's what I'm thinking, you know, you probably want to bring that to the commission just so it's more defensible. The change of use exemptions, I think the staff can probably make a call on those. In the parking surveys, I agree, I don't, you know, I don't know what it tells us, you know, it tells if it's overparked, but we already know that, it's already overparked on Solano, the retail, I mean, maybe San Pablo isn't, it's, could be useful. I don't think it's that much of a burden, so I'm kind of either way on that, on that. That's kind of my general take on all of this. More comments?
It might be interesting, and one other thing, I don't, we don't have any current census data, and we won't for a while, but I wonder, does anyone know any, what is the, is the mode split in Albany changing? Is there any way to find out that? I suspect it is. I suspect more people are biking, more people are walking, and more people are working at home, and, and that the, that the, that the growth in, in, in vehicle miles traveled and by Albanians is dropping. How to, how to get that data, I don't know, but I, I suspect that is the trend, but I don't think it's happening as fast as, it may not be happening as fast as the, as the idealists would like us to believe, and, and, and the push right now is, is anti-parking, and, and so I'm just being contra, and, and saying, let, let's be careful, let's be careful here, yeah, yeah.
Is that?
You get the input you needed?
Yeah. Does that clarify everything?
Do we have any coherent feedback? I mean, cohesive.
Clear as, clear as mud.
I think we'll, we'll take your comments from this evening, and probably prior to giving you any sort of red-line version of an ordinance, give you the additional information that you've requested as part of your consideration.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
All right, with that, I think that concludes our, gets back to the agenda.
Oh, really?
Any announcements or communication discussion?
Yes, the July 11th meeting has been canceled, so we'll see you on July 25th.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, great.
All right.
So, meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.